Are you tired of the large volume of non-Islamic content that has taken over the media space? Are you looking for an exclusive collection of Tafsir of the Quran, Sira of the Prophet, lecture on marital issues and child upbringing? Look no further as iMedia Communication offers you all these and more in the Guided View Park. 120 hours Tafsir of the Quran, delivered over four years in Al-Dummas. Sira of the Prophet, Shema Yehudin, 30 hours from 2017 to 2019. 25 hours of peace and unity convention. Multiple lectures, 50 hours delivered in Nigeria and across the world, for you and your loved ones.
I have only created mankind and jinn kind to obey me. And wallahi, my brothers and sisters, if you do that, you will be content in this world. You will smile even if you are living under a tree. And if you don't do that, you will be depressed even if you are living in a palace. Did you hear that?
Delivered on high-grade flash drives for your TV, your phone, your car or any other platform. Get your pack at iMedia Studio in Anu Masjid, Wusaytou Abuja, or visit www.iMediaTV.TV or call 080 6131 9522. Take deliberate control of your life and that of your beloved ones by taking control of what they watch. Are you tired of the large volume of non-Islamic content that has taken over the media space? Are you looking for an exclusive collection of Tafsir of the Quran, Sira of the Prophet, lecture on marital issues and child upbringing? Look no further as iMedia Communication offers you all these and more in the Guided View Park. 120 hours Tafsir of the Quran, delivered over four years in Al-Dummas. Sira of the Prophet, Shema Yehudin, 30 hours from 2017 to 2019. 25 hours of peace and unity convention. Multiple lectures, 50 hours delivered in Nigeria and across the world, for you and your loved ones.
I have only created mankind and jinn kind to obey me. And wallahi, my brothers and sisters, if you do that, you will be content in this world. You will smile even if you are living under a tree. And if you don't do that, you will be depressed even if you are living in a palace. Did you hear that?
Delivered on high-grade flash drives for your TV, your phone, your car or any other platform. Get your pack at iMedia Studio in Anu Masjid, Wusaytou Abuja, or visit www.iMediaTV.TV or call 080 6131 9522. Take deliberate control of your life and that of your beloved ones by taking control of what they watch. Are you tired of the large volume of non-Islamic content that has taken over the media space? Are you looking for an exclusive collection of Tafsir of the Quran, Sira of the Prophet, lecture on marital issues and child upbringing? Look no further as iMedia Communication offers you all these and more in the Guided View Park. 120 hours Tafsir of the Quran, delivered over four years in Al-Dummas. Sira of the Prophet, Shema Yehudin, 30 hours from 2017 to 2019. 25 hours of peace and unity convention. Multiple lectures, 50 hours delivered in Nigeria and across the world, for you and your loved ones.
I have only created mankind and jinn kind to obey me. And wallahi, my brothers and sisters, if you do that, you will be content in this world. You will smile even if you are living under a tree. And if you don't do that, you will be depressed even if you are living in a palace. Did you hear that?
Delivered on high-grade flash drives for your TV, your phone, your car or any other platform. Get your pack at iMedia Studio in Anu Masjid, Wusaytou Abuja, or visit www.iMediaTV.TV or call 080 6131 9522. Take deliberate control of your life and that of your beloved ones by taking control of what they watch. Are you tired of the large volume of non-Islamic content that has taken over the media space? Are you looking for an exclusive collection of Tafsir of the Quran, Sira of the Prophet, lecture on marital issues and child upbringing? Look no further as iMedia Communication offers you all these and more in the Guided View Park. 120 hours Tafsir of the Quran, delivered over four years in Al-Dummas. Sira of the Prophet, Shema Yehudin, 30 hours from 2017 to 2019. 25 hours of peace and unity convention. Multiple lectures, 50 hours delivered in Nigeria and across the world.
Once again, we welcome you to the continuation of our dars here. I think that also is for recording, isn't it? I record, okay. Get it, please. This is going to be our sixth lesson. Today been the 16th day in the month of Jumada al-Ula, 1441, after the historic Ijraa Prophet Muhammad ﷺ from Makkah to Medina, which is equivalent to the 12th day in the month of January 2020, the Christian era. We are on page 11. We are going to read the second paragraph again, page 11, and run through the meanings of the paragraph. Sheikh, he said: That we should also know before we enter into the main issues that Sheikh Ibn Abdul Wahab raised: “Anna al-muradabillal-’ilmii” that what is intended with knowledge here, that the first thing that he said: “Al-’ilmu” “Alladzi yajibu ala l’ummah” which is compulsory upon the Muslim ummah: “Imma wujuban ainiyan” whether it is individual obligation “au kifaiyian” or it is communal obligation: “Anna wa la’ilmu shari’a” it is the knowledge of the Shariah. That is the knowledge that has been made obligatory upon us. Certain knowledge of the Shariah have been made obligatory upon us individually, while some other form of knowledge have been made obligatory on the community of the Muslims. “Alladzi ja’ah Abihi Rasool” it is the Shariah that the Prophet ﷺ came with. “Amma la’ilmu duniawi” as for the knowledge of this world, the worldly things, not the Shariah now: “Ka’’ilmi sinaat” like the knowledge of, you know, craft-making, isn't it? Knowledge of manufacturing, where you have industries, isn't it? “Wal hiraf” craft. “Wal hisab” calculations. “Wal riyaadiyat” and mathematics. “Wal handasa” and the knowledge of engineering. “Fahad al-’ilmu mubahun” this knowledge is recommended. It is not obligatory upon you. “Yubahut ta’allumahu wa qad yajibu idh ahtajat la’ummah ilaihi” seeking for this category of knowledge is recommended. “Alaika zalik” it is recommended but not compulsory. However: “Wa qad yajibu idh ahtajat la’ummah ilaihi” it can become obligatory if the Muslim ummah is in need of that knowledge. So it moves from being recommended to being obligatory if the Muslim ummah is in need of the knowledge. “Yajibu ala man yastatiyah” it is obligatory upon he who has the ability to seek for that knowledge. “Lakel laisa wa la’ilmu maqasood fi’l Qur’an wa Sunnah” however, it is not the knowledge that is intended in the Quran and the Sunnah. “Wal ladzi athna Allahu ta’ala ala ahlihi wa mada haum” the knowledge that Allah (ﷻ) praises those that have been bestowed with that type of knowledge, those that Allah (ﷻ) praised in the Quran. So when we hear knowledge in the Quran, then we are talking about the knowledge of Quran and Sunnah. Page 11, please. “Wal ladzi qala fihi Nabi ﷺ” and it is the knowledge that the Prophet ﷺ said regarding: “Al-’ulamaahu warathatul-’ambiyaa” the scholars are the inheritors of the prophets. So it is that type of knowledge, the knowledge of Quran and Sunnah. That is the knowledge that we are talking about here. When we say what has been made obligatory upon you is to seek for knowledge, we are talking about that knowledge of Quran and Sunnah. Any other knowledge or every other knowledge besides the knowledge of the Shariah is not obligatory upon the Muslim ummah. But it can become obligatory if the Muslim ummah is in need of that knowledge. Am I communicating? Are we getting it? Taufeeq. Okay. “Al-muradu al-’ilmu shari’a” “al-murad” from “irada”. What is intended here in this statement of Sheikh Muhammad bin Abdul Wahab is the knowledge of the Shariah. Am I communicating? “Wa amma la’ilmu duniawi” this is actually where we are starting today. That is the second to the last paragraph, page 11. Second to the last paragraph, page 11. After the Hadith of the Prophet ﷺ: “Al-ulamaahu warathatul-’ambiyaa” the scholars are the inheritors of the prophets. “Wa amma la’ilmu duniawi” as for the knowledge of this world, worldly knowledge, what today we call Western knowledge, even though at the initial stage I said, “I don't like that categorization.” Knowledge is knowledge. We only talk about Islam giving priority to the knowledge of the Shariah, which is the knowledge of Quran and Sunnah. Every other knowledge is permissible for you to seek for as long as that knowledge is not harmful and as long as people are going to benefit from it. But it is not obligatory upon you to seek for that type of knowledge, but it is permissible for you. “Alaika zalik” “Wa amma la’ilmu duniawi” as for the knowledge of this world, the worldly knowledge: “Faman ja’ahalahu fala ifmah alihi” whoever is ignorant of that knowledge, “fala ifmah alihi” there is no sin on him. That is, “fala ifmah alihi” you are not sinful. But if you do not seek for the knowledge of the Arkanu Salaah, Shuruatu Salaah, Wajibatu Salaah, Sunanu Salaah, as we discussed in our previous way, you will be sinning. You will be sinning, you will be guilty of not seeking for the knowledge that has been made obligatory upon you. The knowledge of how to pray, the knowledge of Taharah, you know, as we said, the Arkanu Salaah and other aspects of Salaah. You will be sinning if you do not seek for that knowledge. But as for this knowledge, “fala ifmah alihi” there is no sin on any individual if he does not seek for the knowledge of engineering, neither did he seek for the knowledge of, you know, mathematics or the knowledge of business, you know, financial or knowledge of production, isn't it? He will not be sinning. “Waman ta’allamahu fa’uwa mubahunlahu” whoever seeks for that knowledge, then it is permissible for him. It is not haram. It is permissible for him. “Wa idha nafa Abihi l’ummah” “Wa idha nafa Abihi l’ummah” if the Muslim ummah or the generality of the ummah, the nation benefits from that knowledge, “fa’uwa ma’juran alihi” that person will be rewarded. He will be rewarded. “Wa muthabun alihi” you search for the knowledge of engineering, the knowledge of law, the knowledge of mathematics, the knowledge of whatever, and people are benefiting from that knowledge that you have sought for, then ma’juran alihi, wa muthabun alihi, you will be rewarded. Subhanallah. As long as people are benefiting from that knowledge, you will be rewarded. “Alaika zalik” “Walu mat al-insan” and if someone was to die “wa huwa yajahal waad al-’ilmu” and is ignorant of this type of knowledge: “Lam yu’axad alihi yom al-kiyama” “Lam yu’axad alihi yom al-kiyama” he will not be held responsible for not seeking for that knowledge on yom al-kiyama. “Lakken” however, that is what “lakken” stands for. However, “lakken” “man mat” whoever dies: “Wa huwa yajal al-’ilmu shari’a” and is ignorant of the knowledge of Shariah: “Xususan al-’ilmu dharuri” particularly, that is, “xususan” specifically, the essential, the necessary knowledge. “Ilmu dharuri” what we say “ma’lumu” means “dharura”. As a Muslim, by default, you have to seek for that knowledge. Am I communicating? As Muslim, by default, you have to seek for that knowledge. F1, please. Just put Lesson 6 on. Now: “Al-’ilmu dharuri” what is “ilmu dharuri”? That is necessary knowledge. Like, how do you purify yourself from minor and major impurity? That knowledge is a necessary knowledge because without it, you cannot pray, you cannot worship Allah. That is why the Prophet ﷺ said what? Uh-huh. What did he say is “shatar al-iman”? “Al-tuhur” “shatar al-iman” I made the voice note explanation in the female Akida group. A lady asked that question on the explanation of the Hadith. Because almost the practical aspect of Ibadah is as a result of purification. Even when you want to perform Hajj at certain level, you have to be purified. When you are doing Tawaf, when you are, you know, and even before you done the Ihram, you have to purify yourself. Then prayer, you have to purify yourself. So the knowledge of how to purify yourself is an essential knowledge. “Ilmu dharuri” the knowledge regarding how to perform prayer is a necessary knowledge for a Muslim. How to recite Quran, at least: “Faqarahu ma tayyassara min al-Qur’an” at least to read something from the Quran. That knowledge is essential because you can't pray without knowing how to read the Quran. Fatia is a necessary knowledge for you to seek for how to recite. The knowledge on the essential aspects of sound fasting, this are necessary knowledge. On who Allah is, this is a necessary knowledge. Who the Prophet of Islam is, this is a necessary knowledge. What is Islam? It's an essential knowledge that every Muslim cannot do without. Wa alaikumussalam. Am I communicating? That is what is known as “al-ilmu dharuri”. “Fa innahu yus al-anuhu yom al-kiyama” because you will be asked regarding this knowledge on yom al-kiyama. If you don't have knowledge regarding this, you will be asked regarding that knowledge on yom al-kiyama. “Lima lam tata’allam” this is how the question is going to be. “Lima lam tata’allam” why didn't you seek for that knowledge? Who wants to stand in front of Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta’ala, on yom al-kiyama? Being questioned on why he did not seek for essential knowledge and he was a Muslim. “Lima lam tata’allam” “Lima da lam tasal” why didn't you ask? They said in Hausa, they say: “Mat ambayi bayaa atta” so the question is, why didn't you ask? If you don't know, there is nothing wrong in asking. “Alaika zalik” Walah, if you don't know, when you ask, you are free from blame. So you have two things. You go and seek for knowledge or you ask regarding things that you don't know because you are going to be asked this question: “Why didn't you seek for knowledge?” or “Why didn't you ask?” “Alladzi yakuulu” regarding which, that is the question, regarding which someone is going to be saying: “Idh wudhiyafi qabrih” when someone is lowered into his grave: “Rabi Allah” that is going to be the answer. My Lord is Allah. So you are going to be asked regarding Allah. That is what you need to understand here. The answer is, “Rabi Allah”, my Lord is Allah. “Wal islamudini” my religion is Islam. “Wanabihi Muhammad ﷺ” and my Prophet is Muhammad ﷺ. “Hada yanjuu min al-najaa” what is najaa? Salvation. Isn't it? That is najaa, isn't it? Salvation, save. “Wanajaina ladzina” “Wa anjaina ladzina” “Wa anjaina ladzina” in Quran chapter 7, Surat Al-Araf. And we save. So this is salvation. He who wants to attend salvation, he who wants to attend salvation should prepare for this answer because this answer is the key to salvation. “Rabi Allah, islamudini wa Muhammad ﷺ nabiyi” “Hada yanjuu” this is salvation. This is what is going to make you to be sin. “Yuqalu lahoo” it will be said to him: “Min ainaha shalta” “Min ainaha shalta” How did you, from where did you get the answer from? “Min ainaha shalta” Where did you get this answer from? “Min ainaha shalta” “Hada yuqul” he will say: “Qaraitu kitab Allah” “Qaraitu kitab Allah” “I read the book of Allah” “Wa ta’allam tuhu” and I search for knowledge in the book of Allah. So ultimately, Sheikh is telling us that the ultimate source of knowledge is the Quran. Because even the answers that you are going to give in your grave, the answers are going to come from the Quran. Don't you now see why he said seeking for the knowledge of Shariah is obligatory? Because the answer to your salvation lies in the Quran. So if you don't seek for that knowledge from the Quran, you are not going to attend salvation. May Allah (ﷻ) count us amongst those that will be saved. “Amma ladzi a’arada an-dhalik” “A’arada” as for the one that turn away from this one. “An-dhalik” who can, who is a genius here? “Amma ladzi a’arada an-dhalik” “An-dhalik” what is that? Whoever turns away from this, what is this? Now, this knowledge that you get from where? From the Quran. Whoever turns away from seeking for the knowledge of the Quran: “Fa innahu” “Verily he idh su’ila fi qabrih” if he is asked in his grave: “Fa innahu yuqul” he is going to say: “Ha, ha, la adiri” you know, exactly, he is going to say: “Ha, ha, la adiri” “I do not know. I was not able to attend the knowledge.” You know, when you learn and you study, then you sit for examination and the first question is with regards to the last page you read, then you forgot. Versus the second question, you've never read about it. Which is more painful? Please answer, please. Time is not on our side. Wa alaikumussalam. The one? The one you read about and you forgot. So you are, it's like, come on, the answer is not far-fetched, isn't it? How many times do you find yourself in such difficult circumstances? Come on, it's here, it's in my brain, but I can't voice it out because I just can't articulate it. But you know it. Am I communicating? The same thing. “Hasaratin alihi” it's going to intensify their grief. The Munafiq, they had people preaching and they saw people going out to seek for knowledge, but they didn't bother to do so. Now, they will think that, as they did in the world of deceiving, you heard your own Allah. They thought that they are deceiving Allah. “Wama yakhdauna illa amfushahum” it's the same thing. They are going to be paid back in the same manner. So they pray with you and you count them amongst the believers. So in the Qabr now, “ha, ha” you know, as if I know the answer because I've had it before, but now it's not forthcoming. “Alaika zalik” so this is a psychological torture that are going to be subjected to. Yeah, Allah (ﷻ) save us. “La adiri” you can't lie. He said, “I do not know.” “Samaitu nasa yu’uluna shayaan” I heard people saying something. “Shayaan” “Samaitu nasa yu’uluna shayaan” I heard people saying something. “Fa qultu” I followed them in repeating what they were saying, but I did not understand what they were saying. They said, “Muhammad Rasoolullah ﷺ” I said, “Muhammad Rasoolullah ﷺ” but I did not seek for the knowledge of who Muhammad ﷺ was. “Alaika zalik” Neither did I seek for the knowledge of the Sunnah of Muhammad ﷺ, let alone following in the footsteps of the Prophet. I only followed people, you know, the bandwagon effect, isn't it? When people were moving, say: “La ilaha illallah Muhammad Rasoolullah ﷺ” I said, “La ilaha illallah Muhammad Rasoolullah ﷺ” but I didn't know what “la ilaha illallah” meant. Neither did I know what Muhammad ﷺ stood for. And I didn't care to seek for the knowledge there. “Samaitu nasa yu’uluna shayaan fa qultu” “Fahada yujij alihi qabrahu nara” “Yu’ujij” that is a word for you. This is the person that his grave will be inflamed. That is a word for you. This is the person that his grave will be inflamed. “Wal iyyadu billah” we seek for Allah's protection against this. “Wa yudayigu alihi fi hatta takhtalif adlaaahu” “Yudayigu” “Naru” isn't it? “Wa yudayigu alihi” and the grave is going to be made narrow for him because he is unable to answer the question that is asked. “Wa yudayigu alihi fi hatta takhtalif adlaaahu” What is “takhtalif”? “Iktalaf” Wasn't it from the word “iktalaf”, isn't it? “Sabani” “Adlaaahu” What is that? His ribs, until his ribs will intertwine. That is “takhtalif adlaaahu”. His ribs, look at my fist, my hand. His ribs are going to intertwine with one another. The right will intertwine with the left and the left with the right. Because he's unable to answer the question that is being asked. Why he didn't seek for knowledge? Can you see the importance of seeking for the knowledge of Sharia? Why the Sheikh said it is obligatory? Because if you don't know the answer there, regarding, the answer to the question, this is what awaits you. But if I don't know what mathematical formula is, will I be asked regarding that in my Qabr? So that is not obligatory upon me. Wa yus bihu, say, yawahikari, going up from subah. Wa yus bihu, then this person will just, but not literally yawahikari. Fa, kon san ahsan chakati, say, ni de turan chen ney bu jemani. What, then he what? Wa yus bihu, say, yawahikari, again, keshkem, wutaya, kee de turan chukutura. Wa yus bihu fi hafratin min hufarin naa. Then he will find himself in the hole from among the holes of Jahannam. Hafratin min hufarin naa. You know, the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, he said, grave is one of the two. Ra'udha, you know Ra'udha? Ra'udha of the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, the Masjid, isn't it? Ra'udha is a garden. So your grave is going to be either a Ra'udha mirriad al-jannah, from the gardens of Jannah. Or hufarin, hafratin min hufarin niran. Or it's going to be a hole, dojan, from amongst the holes of Jahannam. May Allah save God us. So all the people that have died now, their either, their graves is either a garden from amongst the gardens of Jannah, or you complete it. Wa yus bihu fi hafratin min hufarin naa le annahu ma dara. Why? We are giving you the reason. Le annahu ma dara. What is dara? Because he did not know. Wama talaa, what is talaa? Yetluna ayatih. Yetluna, he recites, isn't it? Talaa. That is the word. Because he did not know, la adiri, he said. So la dara wa la talaa. He did not know, neither did he read. Which means, knowledge is kept in seeking for answers. Either verbally or you get it from the books. Fa yaqalu lahu, then it will be said to him. La daraita wa la talait. You did not know. Neither did you read. You know, Abba Ndamamaki. Kaibaka saibaka, ba kumaka karanta, ba kumache wa akay, iqra, read. So if, none of us was born a scholar. Both male and female. Allah has given us the equal capability for spiritual material attainment. Equal capability for spiritual attainment. For material attainment. That is why neither that Islam forbid men, the male, know their female counterpart from seeking for wealth, from seeking for knowledge. Allah has given us equal capability for spiritual attainment. You can't surpass a woman in spirituality if she knows what she's doing. Neither can a woman surpass you in spirituality if you know what you're doing. Fa astabiqul khairat, in good ways, compete with one another. That is the command. Allah didn't say for the male, neither was the command for the female. Fa astabiqul khairat, in good ways, compete with one another. That is why Al-Hassanul Basri, he said, rahimah Allah. If you see someone outracing you in material things, then try to outrace him in spiritual things. You bought the latest car, he wants to buy the one that is better than yours. Don't kill yourself in getting the latest one. Stand up at night and outrace him in Tahlajood. Outrace him in Quranic recitation, outrace him in giving Sadqah. Outrace him in being nice to people. Back to what we're reading. Fa hu wa lam yatalem, this is the person that did not seek for knowledge. Walam yaqtadi bi ahli ilal. Neither did he follow the people of knowledge. You know, he's one of the two. You either become the scholar, or you become the follower of the scholar. Isn't it, yaani, you follow the scholar to seek for clarification on issues? Please, I want to know who Allah is. Then the scholar has the knowledge, he tells you who Allah is. So he did not seek for knowledge. Fa hu wa lam yatalem, walam yaqtadi, iktida, that is follow, isn't it? Walam yaqtadi bi ahli ilal. He did not follow the people of knowledge. Wa innama hu wa da'au fi hayatihi. Innama, in Arabic language, you feedul hasar. He only wasted his life. Wa innama hu wa da'au fi hayatihi. He was lost in his life. He didn't know the essence of his creation. He was lost in his life. He was just after the material things of this world, forgetting about this critical thing. Nobody is going to ask you about the 10 billion naira you have in your bank account. In your Qabr. You wait for that when you stand on Yom al-Kiyama. In your Qabr. The Hadith of Uthman bin Affan. Whenever Qabr is mentioned, he will sob profusely. Until his beard will get drenched. Hani, you know, Ismaula was saying, whenever Yom al-Kiyama is mentioned, Uthman will not cry, but when Qabr is mentioned, he will sob. And he was asked, they said, because I had the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam saying, grave is the first of the domiciles of the hereafter. Whoever has it good there, fi ma'al al-kalam, whoever has it good there, what is going to come after will be good. Whoever has it rough, what is going to come afterwards will be rough. So why shouldn't I shed tears? Because that is the first. And that is where the questioning is going to be. Regarding these key things. Nobody is going to ask you how nice you were to your parents. The key things, the fundamental things regarding Aqeedah, those things that you're going to be asked. You've been nice to your parents, everything will come afterwards. When you meet Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, on Yom al-Kiyama. But this is the first. So let us come home, let us come back home. Which is more important for a secondary to prepare for his Wahik? Or to start preparing for his final thesis? His final project? What will lead him to the final one? Is he not passing the Wahik? So which is more deserving of an utmost attention? So which is most deserving of our utmost attention and care? Aqeedah. Every other thing comes afterwards. If the Aqeedah, if your Wahik is wrong, if you fail, no admission. If you fail in your Qabr, what more do you expect on Yom al-Kiyama? Your Sadqah that you will give, you think you have been given Sadqah. You think you have been nice to your parents, you think you have been, all of those things are what have been commanded. But your Aqeedah is wrong. And from the Qabr, you are not able to answer questions regarding Aqeedah. Do you think you preparing to become an architect will favor you in the university if you are failed? Let me give you an apt example. A student who attended almost all the classes was not registered. I know this student. A student. A student. All our exams scripts were marked, and yes, A. But guess what? When they're harmonizing the results, then I realized that she didn't even register. Because she was waiting for someone that, a guardian, to pay the school fees. Until the time of the exam elapsed. Her name is not on the school's portal. But this person got A. Do you think this A will be of any relevance to this person? The same way, your Aqeedah is the key. If your Aqeedah is not sound, nothing else matters. May Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, grant us sound Aqeedah. Namshi. Fa hada al-levi, you awilu ilashqa, wa iyyadu billah. This is the person that will find himself in misery. A miserable life. Wallahi, a miserable life. Next page, page 12. Fa qauluh, whose statement? Please, I want everyone to answer if I ask a question. Fa qauluh, whose statement? Sheikh Muhammad bin Abdul Wahab. Al-Elmu, he said, four things that are obligatory upon us to seek for. One, it is wajib for you to seek for knowledge. Hada huwa al-Elmu shar'i, al-matulubu minna, jama'atan wa afradan. This is the knowledge of the Sharia. Al-matulubu minna, which is sought from us. We have to go out, we have been charged to go and seek for this knowledge. Jama'atan, all of us, all of us, wa afradan. Ba kuna chaa mufrad da jam'i ba, to jama'atan wa afradan. Kam afrad al-Asra? How many members of the family? Isn't it, afrad? So individually and communally, what is this knowledge that is obligatory upon us, that we are charged to seek for? Wa huwa ma arifatullah, this is knowing who Allah is. Bi asmaa ihi, with his names. Wa sifatihi, and his what? His attributes. Wa ma arifatuhakkihi alayna. And also knowing the right of Allah upon us. Who knows what the right of Allah is upon us? And who can tell us the Hadith? You don't have to give us the Hadith verbatim. Ma'nal Hadith. And the narrator of the Hadith. Subhanallah. Hadith of Muath bin Jabal. What was the Hadith about? What is the right of Allah? Upon us. Yes. You got it, isn't it? That is the right of Allah, that you should worship Allah and not to associate partners with him. That is what we have been teaching, isn't it? That is why we are here. Wama khlaqtu jenna wa la'isaa illa liya'buduun, illa liya'buduun. Ai illa liyuwahiduni fil ibadah. That you single Allah out in worship. You worship him alone. Wa ma arifatuhakkihi alayna, now you understand this aspect, ba. Wa ma arifatuhakkihi alayna, that is the right of Allah upon us. And we know, now, what I want you to do as students. Now, wa ma arifatuhakkihi alayna, just put an arrow on your kitab. Then put the Hadith of Muath. Then when you go back home, write the Hadith of Muath on top of your page. Write that Hadith. The Haq of Allah, write it on top of page 12. And the source of the Hadith. That Hadith will remind you of the right of Allah. So when you are teaching your family members, because the intention is for you to extend this knowledge to your family members first, then you can start teaching your friends, then, you know, when they see you acting on the knowledge, your colleagues and every other person sees the beauty of the knowledge you have sought for. Wa huwa ibadathuh. Now Sheikh is giving us the definition of the Haq of Allah upon us. Now you have the Hadith, Nassan, isn't it? The Hadith of Muath bin Jabal is what? It's a Nass. That tells you clearly, now Sheikh is giving us commentary. What he meant by the Haq of Allah is what? Wa huwa ibadathuh wahda'ula sharikala. And that is worshiping Allah alone without any associated partners with him. He has no any partner. This also is what is contained in the Hadith of Muath bin Jabal. Fa awwalu ma yajibu ala al-aabdi. The first thing that is obligatory upon the servant. Are we not servants of Allah? Hence, the first thing that is obligatory upon us, wa ma arifatuh rabbih. That is, you knowing who your Lord is. You are a slave. You need to know who your master is. Alaisa ka thalik. You are a slave. You have accepted the fact that you are a slave. Then someone has to give you commands. So you need to know who that master is. So now we said we are slaves of Allah. We need to know who Allah is so that we know his commands and prohibitions. He's my boss. So I need to know what my boss wants and what he does not want. So Allah is our master. Allah is our Lord. So I need to know what Allah wants from us and what he has prohibited us from doing. Is it not logical? Excellent. Wa kaifa ya'buduhu, and how does he worship Allah? How will you worship Allah? You need to understand. You need to know who Allah is, then you need to know how to worship Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. Qauluh, wa huwa ma arifatullah. He said, Al-Elmu, isn't it? Then he said, Al-Elmu, wa huwa ma arifatullah. Then we have discussed what this El is now. When we are going to the second part of the statement. Wa huwa ma arifatullah. This knowledge is knowing who Allah is. Kaifa ya'ariful ab rabbahu? Sheikh is asking us this question. Kaifa ya'ariful ab rabbahu? How does a servant knows his master, his Lord? How do you know your Lord? How do you know Allah? The question is, how do I know who Allah is? How do you know who Allah is? Kaifa ya'ariful ab rabbahu? Ya'arifahu bi ayatih wa makluqatihi. Subhanallah. Again, the atheist, please, we are inviting them to come and, you know, have, have, no, not debates. Come on, let them come out dine with Islam. Not have a debate. No, just invite them to dine with Islam, isn't it? Let them come and have, you know, an engagement. A mutual engagement, a balanced world. Isn't it? So how do you know Allah? Since they say there is no Allah. We said, you don't have to search for. The fastest way to know Allah ai bi ayatih. Is verses, is signs. Isn't it? Wa makluqatihi, and his creations. Subhanallah. Now, last week in the Area 11 Dars, here is the Al-Sabashan, I gave this example. One of my mentors, when I was discussing the issue of atheism, he sent me a mind-boggling picture regarding atheism and how someone, you know, challenged the atheist in just a picture. The atheist is asking, where is Allah? I need to see Allah to know if Allah exists. Then he stands and he was looking at the sun rose and sets. There rises again, isn't it? And he was still standing in the same place. The moon appeared, disappeared. And he was still there, looking for the sign of, looking for Allah. He said, come on. That is the evidence of the existence of Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, said, inn fi khalki samawatu wal ardhu, wa iktalaf laili wa naha. La ayatin li uli al-bab, al-lladina yidkuroon Allah qiyama wa qu'ooda wa ala junu bhim wa yatafakroon fi khalki samawatu wal ardhu. Rabbana. Ahah, completed. Ma khalaqta hada ba'tala. You have not created this in jest. You have not created this without a purpose. Inn fi khalki samawatu wal ardhu. Verily, in the creation of the heavens and earth. Wa iktalaf laili wa naraan, in the alternation of the night and day. La ayatin li uli al-bab, there are signs, evidences for men of knowledge, men of understanding. So suffice to say that if you are seeking, if you are still doubting the existence of Allah, we are sorry to use this word, but you lack basic understanding. These are not my words, these are the words of Allah. Because Allah said, there are signs for men of understanding. Ma fu'mal mukhalafa. Anyone that has not been granted understanding will never see those things as the sign from Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. Fa min ayatih, from amongst the signs of Allah, al-lailu wa naha. Night and day. Habba. There is no way, sometimes you are seated in the Masjid, ba'das Salatah Subah. Perhaps you're sitting in a humble Masjid like ours without any fence. So you can, you are seated and you are seeing everywhere around. But you can't know the exact time when the dawn broke. Sometimes you just, it's like you falling asleep. You don't know the exact time. You just realize that it's already clear. That is why we said قل أعوذ برب الفلق. فلقل الصباح. That is تفسير القرآن بالقرآن. We said قل أعوذ برب الفلق. Say, I seek refuge in the Lord of the dawn. الفلق هنا الصبح. Why? Because Allah said فلقل الصباح. Allah is the one that brings the dawn, isn't it? يعني, it makes it apparent from the darkness of the night. None is able to do that except Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. فلقل الصباح. I think it's Surah An'am. Surah An'am, isn't it? I used to confuse An'am and Araf. Well, I, I, I've been having difficulty for decades now. Surah An'am and Surah Araf. Perhaps because of the similarity. نامش. ومن مخلوقاته. From amongst the creations of Allah that are pointed towards the existence of Allah. الشمس والقمر. Subhanallah. Look at the, just search Google. The, the sun, isn't it? And try to understand the size of the sun. Try to understand everything about the sun. The size. The magnificence kept in it. The creation of the sun itself, the closer you see it as if it's a flame, isn't it? But from far you just see a smooth round something. But as you get closer, you just see as if fire is burning. Look at the creation of the sun, look at the creation of the moon. كما يأت بيان وذا، إن شاء الله, don't worry. There is a detailed explanation regarding this and subsequent topics in this Kitab, Insha Allah. يعرف الله بأياته. The servant knows Allah with the signs of Allah. الكونية, universal signs of Allah. وأياته القرآنية. And the verses, you know, we have two types of signs now. We have آيات القونية وأيات القرآنية. The universal signs of Allah and the Quranic signs and verses. إذا قرأ القرآن. Well, when you read the Quran, Araf Allah, you're going to know Allah. You're going to know Allah. If you read the Quran, you're going to know Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. إنه هو الذي خلق السماوات. It is he who created the heavens and the earth and the heart. وأنه هو الذي سخر ما في السماوات والأرض. There are verses that talk about this. It is he who has subjected ما في السماوات والأرض, whatever is in the heavens and on the earth. They are under the control of Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. وأنه هو الذي يحيي. Where you meet, we are telling you who Allah is. It is he who gives life and takes life. Again, Prophet Ibrahim alaihissalam, in introducing Allah to his people. In Surah Two. Which Surah? Surah Shu'ara. When he was introducing Allah to his people, he was saying, it is the one, Allah is the one that gives life and takes life. This is Allah, nobody is able to do that and nobody will ever be able to do that. وهو على كل شيء قدير. And he, Allah, has power over everything. Allah is able to do everything. Whatever you think is impossible, is possible with Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. وهو على كل شيء قدير. Allah is able to do anything and everything. Allah is able to do that. وأنه omnipotent, omnipotent. وأنه الرحمان الرحيم. And that Allah is the most beneficent, the most merciful. Well, the mercy of Allah is all encompassing. How can you sin against Allah? Associate partners with Allah? Kill the servants of Allah? Yet when you repent, Allah accepts your repentance and Allah raises your status even by that repentance. Subhanallah. You have killed, you have denied Allah the rights. It's right upon you. You have killed the servants of Allah. You have spread corruption on the face of God. Yet, the day you realize that you need to repent, you repented, Allah said, it is as if you have not committed any sin. It is as if you have not committed any sin. Because the Prophet ﷺ said. أتى إبو مين ذم. كم الله ذنب. The one that has repented from a sin is as if he has no any sin, however big your sin is. Well, if you repent, it's as if you have not committed any sin. That is Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. Nobody knows that except Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. فالقرآن يعرف بالله. أليس كذلك ذلك? You know Quran teaches us who Allah is. وأنه هو الذي أنعم علينا بجميع النعم. And it is Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, that has favored us with all the favors that we have in our lives. The favor. The gift, the bounty of being able to even assimilate what I'm saying now. And for me to be able to articulate what I'm saying, that is an Nima from Allah. A lot of people want to talk, but they cannot. A lot of people want to listen to the beautiful recitation of the Quran, but they cannot. A lot of people want to see the house of Allah Ka'abah, but they cannot. So Allah has favored us. Some, they listen to what you are saying, but because their, their Aqal is not with them. Because of insanity, they are not able to understand anything. But you have to be grateful to Allah for all these favors. You are seated here, what are we discussing? Allah. Someone is seated somewhere and they are discussing other than Allah. This is a favor from Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, unto you. You need to recognize all these salient things. What happens when you are seated here? The angels come, they surround you, four things. Allah mention you amongst the Malaaika. Allah covers you with his Rahmah. Allah sends down upon you tranquility. That is why we are all calm. In my Riyaad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam class, what did I say for those that were there on, on Tuesday? You know, the beauty of sitting down the Masjid and talking about Allah or listening to Allah, well, I cannot be equaled. Then you are afraid to step out from the Masjid, that was what I was saying, isn't it? You are afraid to step out from the Masjid, because once you are in the sanctuary of the Masjid, there is that tranquility, calmness, you just forget about everything. And you just enjoy your life. I said it. I said, we are afraid to even step out from the Masjid. The moment you step out, the problems of the Dunya come in, because there is no place like the Masjid. I said it on Tuesday. And the Masjid, you forget about everything that is bothering you. The moment you step out, welcome to the world. As if you want to run back to the Masjid. I'm speaking for myself, I don't know. Isn't it? You know, I, I, I didn't want to leave the Masjid, isn't it? Because of these things. And when you are seated in this type of gatherings, that is what happens to you, the beauty. Let's continue. وأنه هو الذي أنعم علينا بجميع النعم. وأنه هو الذي خلقنا. And it is Allah who created us. ورزقنا and the one that enriches us. فإذا قرأت القرآن. Well, if you read the Quran, أعرفت ربك. You will know your Lord. You want to know Allah, pick the Quran. You want to know Allah, pick the Quran. If you want to know Allah, pick the Quran. فإذا قرأت القرآن أعرفت ربك أذ وجل باسمائه. You know him with his beautiful names. وصفاته. You know his attributes. وaffalih and you know the deeds of Allah. Allah said إن كل شيء خلقنا وبقدر. Verily, we have created everything with Qadar, with precision. قومي أكان تاري. That is فائل, mean affaali Allah. Allah, those actions, this is one of the actions of Allah. That Allah creates everything with precision. أكان تاري. قومي أكان تاري. ديك أبندك كاغي كفارو أكان تاري. There is no confusion, Allah is not a lot of confusion, there is precision in exactly whatever is occurring in this universe. إما individually, in yourself, or in the society that you live in. Everything is happening in accordance with the تاري, not Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. فإذا نظرت في الكون. نظرت. What do you call this in Arabic? نظرة, glasses, isn't it? So فإذا, وإذا نظرت في الكون. If you observe the universe. أعرفت ربك, well, you know your Lord. Malan, I was watching, I was watching a documentary on the universe. Subhanallah. والله العظيم. If you see how insignificant we are. The world that we live in is so insignificant, the entire world, this earth. Well, that we live in is so insignificant compared to other planets. Then when you start seeing other planets, the, the, how, how small they are when you compare them to other ones. Then when you compare to the sun, the solar system itself, the sun itself, how? Then when you zoom and you see yourself standing in just a point, well, you are not occupying anything, then you start asking yourself. Who am I to go against Allah? يعني, you are so insignificant. And when you look at the map, try even Google map. Well, when you look at it, you just see how insignificant, the farther as you go higher, everything becomes smaller, that is the law of perspective, isn't it in architecture? The law of perspective, the farther the smaller. So imagine Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, the Rahman, على الأرش استوى. Allah is far away from his creations. The أرش of Allah. أعظم مخلوقاته. Is the greatest of all the creations of Allah. And it is offering roof over all other creations. Every creation of Allah is under the عرش. الرحمان على الأرش الاستوى. Allah rose over the استوى كما يليق بجلاله وأزمته. As it befits his majesty. So imagine the distance and how insignificant you are. In this world, you are just flying above Abuja and you see how small everything becomes. Just twenty-five thousand feet. Imagine the distance, how insignificant all of us are. So you know Allah from all this and you can, you can imagine, you know, the creation of Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. إنه هو الذي خلق هذا الخل. It is Allah that created this creation. وسخر هذا الكون. It is Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, that is holding this entire universe and that is controlling the universe. وأجراه بهكمته. And Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, is controlling the universe and allowing the universe to move. بهكمته with his wisdom, perfect wisdom. وعلمه his knowledge. هذا هو العلم بالله. This is the knowledge regarding who Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala is. We are going to stop here, Insha Allah. Next week we'll continue. قوله ما عرفت نبيه. So before next week, go and read about the Prophet ﷺ. Now quickly, our Hadith, please. From this side. I'm going to pick, as I said. Hadith. Our last, our, the Hadiths. Bismillah. Then the sisters. None was around last week. Okay, quickly, please. Please quickly, now. Raise your voice.
Five Hours of Peace and Unity Convention. Move to Menke Lectures. Fifty Hours Delivered in Nigeria and Across the World. You and your loved ones.
I have only created mankind and Jindan to obey me. And wallahi, my brothers and sisters, if you do that, you will be content in this world. You will smile even if you are living under a tree. And if you don't do that, you will be depressed even if you are living in a palace. Did you hear that?
Delivered on high-grade flash drives for your TV, your phone, your car, or any other platform. Get your park at Imedia Studio in Anuva Masjid, Wusayt Abuja. Or visit www.iMediaTV.TV or call 080 61319522. Take deliberate control of your life and that of your beloved ones by taking control of what they watch.
They couldn't believe themselves. That is the beauty of being pushed. You, you can't believe that you would be able to do it. All right, please. Now, Ansit. Ram Muslim, now, now, another person. ممتع. Nam. So you can see everyone is challenged now, you can be able to do it. I said Hadith number two and four, I was surprised. Well, I was surprised that they actually memorized it. And that is the beauty of it, Insha Allah. And before we started this memorization issue, what did I say? I encouraged every one of us with the Hadith, that is amazing. Abba, you are hiding your face, because I said I was gonna call you, I knew you were not around last week. Do you understand? The Prophet ﷺ, let me repeat the Hadith again so that each and every one of us will be encouraged to memorize Hadith of the Prophet ﷺ. And the narration of Imam Al-Tirnizii. The Hadith is authentic according to Nasab bin Al-Bani. The Prophet ﷺ said. نظر الله عمران. نظر الله عمران. You see, on Yom Al-Kiyamah, they said. Some faces that they will be radiant, shining. إلى ربيها ناظرة. Onto their Lord, unlooking, they're looking at Allah. That was one of my reflecting moment with the Quran some few days back. But looking at Allah, that is the highest you can get in Jannah. So ناظرة, so the Arabs would say نظر. May your face be bright. So نظر الله عمران, this is a Dua from the Prophet ﷺ. I said it, when your mom prays for you, you're, 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 you know, trust me. Trust me. When your mom prays for you, they say, go and sleep, isn't it? You know, some, 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 some few days back, I needed something, then I called my mom, she was sleeping, I said, dilemma. I need her to wake up and do Tahajjud and pray for me. And now she's sleeping. And I was calling, so that they, they called, I didn't want anyone to wake up, I said, I just need this. Because when, when your, if your mom is alive, don't suffer. Just call upon her. Sometimes there are Dua that are earned. And that Dua is magic. When you do nice to your parents and they pray for you without you seeking for it, then there is a Dua that you seek for. That one, you know, is just there. But when actually you are nice to your parents and they raise up their hands to pray for you, that's a different Dua. Now imagine, they say, when you see someone progressing in life, they say he's moving with his mother's Dua. Now we are talking about you moving with the Dua of Prophet Muhammad ﷺ. You can't compare. The Prophet says نظر الله عمران. May Allah brighten the life of this person. May Allah brighten this individual. من يا رسول الله. He said سمع منا شيئا. The one that heard from me, anything at all. A Hadith, anything, even if it is one Hadith. سمع منا شيئا. فبلغه كما سمعوا. Then he related it the way he heard it. How can you relate it the way you heard it? How can you relate the Hadith of the Prophet ﷺ the way you heard it? By memorization. سمع منا شيئا فبلغه كما سمعوا. This is مفهوم, isn't it? This is the understanding you have to memorize. Imagine the Prophet say, may Allah brighten your life. So whoever wants to see light in his life, memorize the Hadith of the Prophet ﷺ and teach people the Hadith and practice the Hadith. So that is the encouragement I have for you to memorize this Hadith of the Prophet. Don't think that you not be able to do it, wallahi, you can do it. I'm sure those people that are memorizing it now and contributing in the class, they didn't believe that they could. But now they believe that they can and they can even do more. Insha Allah. So this Hadith is what you're going to memorize now. I recite, I go through the Hadiths. Please, we said you have to pay attention to the Nahwu, isn't it? The grammar there, how the words end. The grammar there, how the words end. أن أبي عبد الله النعمن بن بشير رضي الله عنهما قال سمعت رسول الله صل الله عليه وسلم يقول إن الحلال بين وان الحرام بين وبينهما أمور مشتبهات لا يعلمهن كثير من الناس فمن اتقى الشبهات فقد استبرأ لدينه وعرضه ومن وقع في الشبهات وقع في الحرام كالراعي يرعى حول الحما يشكو أن يرتاع فيه أنا وان لكل ملك حما أنا وان حما الله محارمه أنا وان في الجسد مضغتا إذا صلحت صلح الجسد كله وإذا فسدت فسد الجسد كله أنا وهي القل رواه البخاري ومسلم. Don't shake and think that you not be able to, if you can memorize Hadith number four. You know, number two is easy, but أخبرني عن الإسلام, أخبرني is easy. But Hadith number four, stages of creation, and the Arabic there is different, isn't it? If you can memorize Hadith number four, please, you can memorize this Hadith. I'm telling you, you can, and you tell yourself you can. All you need, you have one week to memorize this Hadith. Some people are meant to memorize these Hadiths. Wallah, some people in a day, they will be forced to memorize ten Hadiths or even forty Hadiths of Arbaun and Nawawi. Kids, so please, you can, please, you can, please, you can. Isn't it, insha Allah, you can. So this is the Hadith. Let me give you a quick formula to memorizing this. When you know the meaning, it sticks to the brain. أن أبي عبد الله, from Abu Abdallah, Numan bin Bashir. Numan bin Bashir رضي الله عنهما. May Allah be pleased with them both, him and his father. You know, his father brought him to the Prophet and said, "I have gifted my son this gift." The Prophet said, "Did you equate the gift amongst the other children?" He said, "No," said, "Don't make me a witness to injustice." It was Numan. His father, Bashir. قال, the Prophet ﷺ said, Numan said, سمعت رسول الله صل الله عليه وسلم. I had, that is سمعت. I had the Prophet ﷺ يقول, saying. قال is the Prophet said. يقول, I had him saying, which means he was there when the Prophet was saying. إن الحلال بين. Verily, Halal is clear. وان الحرام بين. And verily, Haraam is clear. وبينهما أمور مشتبهات. And between them, there are matters. Other than these two, isn't it? There are matters that, issues that you don't know whether they fall into Haraam or Haraam. The Prophet said, لا يعلمهن كثير من الناس. Majority of people do not have knowledge regarding this. فمن اتقى شبهات. التقوى, what do we say is the meaning of Taqwa? We قاية, protection. Taqwa is protection now. So when we said, اتقى الله, hear Allah, it means protect yourself from the anger of Allah. Protect yourself from Jahannam, that is protection, that is Taqwa. So the Prophet said, فمن اتقى شبهات. The Prophet ﷺ said, Now, he said, فمن اتقى شبهات. Thus he who avoids doubtful matters clears himself in regard to his religion and his honor. Which means if you fall into doubtful matters, it affects your Islam, it affects your honor, isn't it? So stay within Halal and Haraam. Then the Prophet ﷺ said, But he who falls into doubtful matters eventually falls into that which is unlawful, like the shephard who pastures around a sanctuary, all but gazing therein. Truly, every king has a sanctuary, Allah has a limit, don't go beyond this place. But if you keep gazing around it, there is every possibility that you fall. So if you are doing Makru, 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 there is every chance that you are going to fall into Haraam. So avoid, avoid, you know, keep a distance. Imagine you standing on a cliff. The likelihood of you falling off the cliff is higher than the one that is behind you. So that is it. So, when you know, and the Prophet completed it, said, he said, truly, in the body there is a muscle of flesh. A muscle of flesh, which if it be whole, if it is good, all the body is good. And if it is diseased, all the body is diseased. Truly, it is the heart. So this is the Hadith. When you go through the translation, insha Allah, it will guide you. Just memorize the translation first, isn't it? Then, when you are memorizing the Arabic, it guides you towards understanding it. Then, you, when you memorize, practice it. Call your mother, call your father, or call your siblings. Let me teach you this Hadiths of the Prophet ﷺ. And you know, repeat, 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 and until they understand it. The best way to know is to teach.